All right, we're good, yes. All right, the board has returned to open session. At this time, is there any public comment? Okay. Then at this time, are there any proposed changes to the agenda? Okay, if not, then we will move on to committee reports. First committee listed is education.
Okay, we're going to talk about the increase in personal learning instruction because it's next week. And so I'm sure Angela and the staff is ready to go, so we're going to hear about that. You want to come up? Yeah.
Angela, I'll go ahead and kind of kick things off as we agreed I would. So the Board of Education, really just our last meeting, you endorsed this direction. But we wanted tonight to provide you with the additional detail. And before we provide you with the additional detail, I need to thank this group that's walking up here right now because the efforts have indeed been, I will say Herculean, that they have been doing things that probably take them three months in the summertime to put schedules together and redo schedules they have done in just a matter of weeks and days here. So I know there have been a lot of really long days, but a lot of problem solving, a lot of collaboration among this group. So I just want to say thank you to this group, so thank you all so much. I also want to thank our teachers. So as you know, this was not necessarily what teachers prefer to do in April, to shift schedules, to reconfigure classrooms, to put new groups of children together. And so this was, again, when we heard from some teachers last meeting, I think it was not about this fear of COVID. It became this concern about making so many significant changes. And yet, our goal has been to really minimize change for the children. But it has created a lot of change for the adults. And I just really appreciate the effort that has been put into it. And people have just come to the table and have been open-minded and problem-solving oriented and certainly student-oriented in finding solutions. So I'm excited about what we're going to share with you tonight. We'll click to the next slide. I think, Don, do you have?
I have.
You can do it. There we go. I do, I can. Thank you. So as you know, our goal for this whole year has been to maximize safe in-person learning for our students, also to provide a high-quality remote academy. We wanted the continued focus, obviously, to be on student learning and the social-emotional well-being of our students. So there's been a lot in sort of the literature, a lot in just sort of public media about what's going on with students, both from an academic point of view as well as a social-emotional well-being point of view. So we wanted to see what improvements we could make in that area. As you know, a big shift for us came when the Illinois Department of Public Health and then the CDC modified the social distancing guidelines from six feet to three feet. And that really just gave us a sense of greater comfort that we knew to bring more children into the school for longer periods of time, the social distancing piece would have to change. And we will be talking about the three-foot social distancing for our students. We also note this is what our parents wanted. This is what our parents were asking us for. Again, it wasn't everybody, but we really felt the majority of the parents in our community were asking for increased in-person learning time for our students. As I said, as I thank this group, there are and have been a number of challenges as we've looked at this model and this shift. Obviously, to ensure the health and safety of all of our staff and students is key critical. It's been the key critical issue all along. It always is, even when there's not a pandemic. But particularly during a pandemic, that's been a significant challenge. And really, you know, getting comfortable with this idea, are we really okay, you know, with children being closer together? Masks will still be on. We also know that there will be a small group of students staying for lunch, and the principals will talk a little bit about that in a few minutes. We also wanted to minimize change. So I just talked about change. Change is hard. Change is particularly hard in April in a school system when you've kind of fallen into your routines and things are well-established. And to kind of really shift that is significant, is a significant challenge. We really want to minimize, as I had minimized, minimize change for everybody, but in particular for our children. So we wanted to figure out how to minimize teacher and school transfers for our students. And that was probably our greatest challenge when we just started really looking at the numbers. And you're going to hear more about that here in our presentation tonight. So I think we've been able to achieve that. It's not at zero. In particular, the students coming from remote academy into in-person learning because they're essentially opting for a change, knowing that our remote teachers are going to stay remote, that, again, that there are changes for the students that are moving from remote to in-person. We also wanted to make sure that the remote and the in-person would mirror each other. So if we were going to have more instructional time directly with your teacher, with the child's teacher, that that needed to be true for remote also. And yet, there's a different set of challenges that come with that. Do we really want the children, you know, on the Zoom screen longer? And how do we do that in a way that's meaningful for increasing their instructional opportunities and the engagement with children who are still staying full-remote? Obviously, scheduling modifications, and there are some staffing increases. We're going to talk about that. I want to thank the board for being open to that. We kind of said we're going to need some flexibility here around some personnel decisions, and we're going to fill you in on those details here as part of the presentation. Lunch was another huge challenge. We knew from our survey that, or is a huge challenge, I should say. We knew from our survey that about 80% of our families said they could take their children home for lunch. And so we've really said to the community, "Thank you. Thanks for being flexible. Thanks for considering that." We know that's also a disruption in family life and not typical. But again, the principals will share a little more. But I think we've been pretty successful in that number being something that we really feel we can manage in the schools. The other one, question had come up about early learners. What challenges or, you know, what opportunities might we shift or and change for our early learners? So we're going to discuss that as well. And then, next slide is about early learners. So there we go, Casmira.
Hi, everyone. It's good to see you tonight. So when the discussion started for moving to a full-day instructional implementation for K through five, the questions from the community started to come up about what are we doing for early learners? And so Pam Shaw and I went back to our early learner team, and we started talking about options that would, you know, promote more time and more interaction with students, but still be in a safe environment. And so the team came up with the implementation of exploration and play Wednesdays. And so this will be happening, this will happen every Wednesday. The morning session, students will arrive from at 9:45, and they will stay until 11:00 a.m. And the afternoon session, students will arrive at 12:45 p.m. and stay till 2:00. It'll all be outside. And so stations will be set up. There will be a playground area that will be one of the stations, but there will be things like sand tables and water tables, planting. We'll do some activities for Earth Day. So we're planning out each Wednesday someone with a theme-based. We've also scheduled and booked at the end of May, we've booked Dot the Storyteller to come in and to present to the students there. What I'm really excited about this plan is that what's been most limiting this year is the peer modeling and the peer interaction. And we know that children of three and four-year-old, that's how they learn, right? They learn by watching each other, and they learn by through play. And so although we've been able to make modifications throughout the course of the year and still allow that to happen in the classroom, I love the outside opportunity so it can happen more naturally and more as you would expect a three- and four-year-old to interact. So also, I think the only thing I didn't mention here are that the parents are welcome to attend. Of course, they are, you're not required to attend. They can just drop their child off and pick their child up. The only exception that we did add is that they couldn't bring a sibling with them. And that's just because of the COVID precautions. So we do have some parents who have signed up and said that they are going to be attending with us. So it'll be a really nice experience for our early learners.
So moving on to, good evening, everybody. Moving on to kindergarten and grades one through five. We'll start with grades one through five. At 8:20 a.m., students will have our student entry time. From 8:00 to 8:20 is a teacher-plan time. 8:20, doors open, students start entering the building. At 8:20 a.m., that also is the start of our students who remain in the Remote Learning Academy. Instruction will begin promptly at 8:20 a.m. The students that are in-person, instruction will start as soon as the students have entered the building, gone into their classrooms, got settled in. So figures sometime probably around between 8:22 to 8:25, I would think instruction would start to begin in the in-person. And then at 10:50 a.m., we're going to dismiss for lunch. And I would like to thank our parent community for really working with our buildings, our principals, and all of us in really finding a way to take their children home for lunch. I believe most of us have met that 80% threshold. The parents had said in the survey they could take their kids home. Some of us, in fact, have exceeded it. So the numbers are very palatable and should be easy to manage in a safe manner. Students will be eating outside as much as possible. We do have the tents out there. Even if it's a light drizzle and the temperatures are relatively, you know, warm, we're going to be eating outside. We want to make sure that if there's lightning, we're not eating outside. You know, the tents have metal poles, so certain safety measures there. So we, you know, if we do need to eat inside, all of the principals have identified a space indoors where students will be socially distanced. They'll be sitting six feet apart unmasked, and they will be facing one direction. And, you know, we're going over simple things with our staff. We'll be going over with our students next week that, you know, some of our students that are staying for lunch might be in first or second grade. They need their orange peeled or their yogurt, you know, tube opened up. So teaching them that when you stand up and you have your mask off, put your mask back on, and then go and approach a paraprofessional or an assistant in the lunchroom and ask them to kindly help you with your orange, help you open your milk, so on and so forth. Leave your mask on, go back to your seat, then take your mask off and finish your lunch. So it's really teaching routines to students that they never had to really learn before. Also, being mindful of the fact that some of our students coming back, if they were in first grade, this is the first time, if they're in first grade this year, this is the first time they're back in school for a full day. So it's going to be a little bit of a surprise, you know, because we're looking at a whole year where, you know, we went to, you know, the pandemic hit us when they were in kindergarten. So, you know, really just working with the kids and teaching those routines. So all the principals have been working with their staff to talk about what those routines should be so we can have safe lunch. After lunch, students will be entering the building at 12:10 p.m. That's when Remote Learning Academy will start for remote students. And then shortly after that, probably by 12:15, we'll have our in-person instruction begin. And at 2:55 is dismissal for the day. And that would be remote. Students would be offline at that point, and then we'll be dismissing each of our buildings. Kindergarten, we wanted to make sure, and Dr. Ryan Toye spoke of this earlier, that we mirror the times. So we want to make sure we have the equal amount of minutes for AM kindergarten and PM kindergarten. So you notice the times are, both of them are two hours and 35 minutes. AM kindergarten, 8:20 a.m. student entry, they're going to get started. And in fact, I think all the principals are going to have their kindergartners enter the building first. You're talking about a half-day program. Let's get them in, let's get them in the classroom first. 10:55 dismissal, and same with the PM. 12:15, we'll open those doors at 12:10, so by 12:15 for sure, you know, well, student entry is 12:15, but again, you know, we'll be starting probably closer to right at that 12:15 mark. And 2:15 would be student dismissal. Remote and classroom teachers will cover the following throughout the day. So now all of our teachers with the new full day, whether it's Remote Learning Academy or whether it's the in-person instruction, will cover social-emotional learning. And when you think about that, we're teaching routines again. So now we have kids and, you know, we have class sizes in the twenties, and it's a lot different than before. We're teaching how to line up. We're teaching how to, you know, stay socially distanced. Yes, it's three feet now, but we're teaching a whole new manner of doing this. And some of the teachers have actually done something really neat, and that was zoom in their other session of class. So let's say they're in AM session, they've zoomed in their PM kids so they can all meet each other. So that is, all speaks to that social-emotional piece as well because this is all new to the kids, you know, finally being together again after a year. English, language arts, of course, reading and writing, mathematics, and science and social studies.
So Dr. Ryan Toye talked about some of the challenges and included some challenges with our Remote Learning Academy as well. Our goal with Remote Learning Academy has been that we wanted to mirror our increased synchronous instruction at Remote Learning Academy with what was happening with our in-person instruction. The challenge that that brings up, though, is that it's the same amount of time, same length of time, but as Dr. Ryan Toye mentioned, we don't necessarily want kids on the screens for that amount of time. So we've been working with the teachers on different ways that they can implement breaks, different types of breaks they can implement, different ways to get kids moving and engaged in learning without necessarily having to do their learning all on the screen. And we'll continue to work with our staff on that throughout the next couple of months. Planning instruction at the Remote Learning Academy, we want to make sure that we're planning instruction. Again, that includes working offline and time away from screens, as I just said. And it's also important to note that specials will not have an asynchronous time anymore. All specials will be taught either synchronously, or will be taught synchronously for Remote Learning Academy just as they're being taught. Music and art are being taught synchronously, and PE is in-person for in-person students. But all their specials will be during their time of learning instead of having that asynchronous component that we had with the half-day program.
Angela just alluded to the special area classes, art, music, and PE. As she said, will be taught synchronously through Zoom. In the situation with PE, our goal is to have kids outside as much as possible to give the students, in some situations, opportunities for a mask break, to shroud them out as space allows, but also to provide instruction and opportunities for movement breaks. We look at band orchestra, we're still, we're working through that schedule as well. Whole band by school once a week. And then remote sectionals will expand it during the lunch hour. Where students will zoom in remotely with the instructor to get instruction by instrument groups. So the teacher is working on that to make sure that that's possible for all students to have that opportunity. So that's where we're going with specials.
And then with kindergarten specials, we had kindergarten specials outside of their half-day instruction during the half-day program. But now we are working towards mirroring what would be considered the regular school day for all students. And so since kindergarten is a half-day program, we're keeping all of their work within the half-day that they're in attendance.
Academic services are also changing. These people are specialists, are advanced learning teachers, are ELL instructors. They've probably had the heaviest lift. Through the year until this time right now, their services that they provide for children based on individual need have been provided outside the synchronous time during the asynchronous time. These children have been available. It's also enabled them to flexibly group children across schools because it was, all these services were provided on Zoom. Now that we're trying to bring them back into the school day, we're really trying because we know, we said from the very beginning, that children learn best when they're in person. And so those specialists have to take their schedule, which is made by, based on individual children's schedule, completely start over and create specials now based on their location as much as possible. To that end, some of these services will be provided in person, but some of them may need to be provided through Zoom, especially to those remote students. That's the same for interventions and enrichments, English language services, and some special education services. The special education service is the bulk of them. Nearly all of them, unless the child is remote, will be provided in person.
So I wanted to share with you some numbers following the survey closing. You can see that we have 798 kindergarten through fifth-grade students who will be in-person learners, which is about 78% of our student population. And we have 220 that are remote learners, which is about 21 and 1/2%. It's slightly off of that 100% because at the time that this chart was created, we still had about three students who hadn't responded. So that's a point, I think it's 0.3% that's missing. And then, as Dr. Ryan Toye talked about, here are the class sizes for all remote and in-person learners. Just so you can have a see the range of classes that we have and where we ended up. We were able to, we knew we had the second-grade class that would be 26 students. We were aware of that at the beginning, so we have that class there. And then we have some classes that are 25s and 24s. We have, thank you very much to the board for allowing flexibility with staffing. We have hired five long-term subs who will support as paraprofessionals, working towards supporting those larger classes. They are floaters at the different buildings. Well, at Central Ames and Blythe, they are floaters to support multiple classes. The person we hired at Hollywood will support Ariel Schultze's third-grade class because she's the only teacher in the district doing dual-platform with her students since she had taught AM in-person and PM remote. In order to minimize the change for those students, we offered that they could stay remote and have, continue to have Ms. Schultze for the rest of the year. So she's the only teacher in the district who has to have that lift, so we are providing support for her as well. You can see at first grade at Ames, we have three sections. We had a number of first graders who wanted to return to in-person learning. And had we divided them up among the hybrid classes or the in-person classes we had, it would have brought our numbers up to 25 or 26, which was too much, especially in a first-grade class. So we have hired a long-term substitute who will teach that first-grade class. It's actually a current paraprofessional who has certification to also sub as a teacher who will teach that class. And then we hired a person to work as a paraprofessional to support who she was supporting prior to that. So those 13 students are in this new class instead of bringing our first-grade classes up to 25 and 26. I think that was, those were the big things I wanted to point out there. Before closing, Dr. Ryan Toye had mentioned a lot of thank yous, and I just need to do the same. The principals have been great. The amount of time they have put in, meeting with me. I think we've met, it feels like just about every day, trying to get everything together and ready so that the teachers were ready and the teachers feel supported and ready for April 12th. So I thank this group because they have just, it's been endless work for them, and so thank you. Thank you to our teachers as well, the work they're doing, the work they're putting in to be ready, to make sure students feel welcomed. You heard Mr. Gierman talk about how they're working already on trying to build community with their AM and PM classes. We have great staff, and they're so dedicated, and they've risen to the challenge, and I thank them for that. I also want to thank the parents because while it's been a heavy lift for us, there are different pieces of this that have been hard for parents. Change is hard for adults. Our kids end up being resilient, and it impacts them a little bit less than it impacts us as adults. So I just need to thank the parents for moving along in this process with us and going with the flow with us as we're working through this and asking the questions that have helped us redevelop and reshape some of the things that we're doing. And then a large thank you to you as well because your support has been what's kept us going. Your questions, your thoughts, your suggestions have been so helpful. So none of this could be done without the team of everyone, including Dr. Ryan Toye. Thank you. Of all of us working together to get to this point for April 12th. Thank you. Questions?
I have a question. When there's a class with a sub coming in to support, are those two teachers given time to meet before next week so that they can plan and meet each other and arrange for any instruction? Or are you just going to, are they just going to do it first day? Or, you know what I'm asking, is there any collaboration time for them?
See, that's an excellent question because they did it today.
Good.
So, you know, we took great advantage. And again, thank you, Board of Education, for our e-learning day today. We appreciate that. Our teachers appreciate there was a lot done today, a ton of work, you know, a lot of heavy lifting and valuable, valuable time. There was, every single minute was used. So, you know, we're setting up everybody for success. So the new first-grade teacher at Ames is set up for success, the people who will be co-teaching. We're still in the hiring phase of some people that are, you know, waiting maybe to get background fingerprint checked over at Riverside Brookfield High School. But as soon as they come in, we will carve out some time. You know, we'll go right to Angela or Mrs. Dolazal, and we'll say, can we get some time out of the day to, you know, have some collaboration there? So everybody has been working really well together.
Good.
And I think the staff feels pretty well-prepared. And today really made a big difference.
Right.
Huge difference.
I appreciate you doing that, like, today and not the end of next week or something because it'd be so hard just to pop in and meet this new co-teacher as well, you know. And I have a, maybe it's not a dumb question, but for maybe Pete can answer about the specials. Will it feel the same for the kids? You know how you always have music on Tuesday or library on Monday? Is that going to be the same? Just a logistical question as a parent.
We spent the better part of, I don't know, two or three or four days about a week ago rebuilding the entire special schedule for every one of the buildings, layering it over services, layering it over advanced classes for ELA and math, and getting the framework of those teacher schedules put in place. But kids should be getting two PE classes a week for first through fifth. Kindergarten, it's one of each, one art and then two music classes as well. Layered all those things in. So, yeah, we've done a lot of work to get this right for kids.
That's great. Good, good, good. I know that, because I know, like, I know my kid will ask, "What's happening? When do I see Mr. Howes? And does it feel the same?" Because, you know, as you said, change is different. But they all want to know the little details. I guess I just have one more question. Sorry to barrage you. You know, when they do the English language work or someone needs a speech therapist, if they ever had masks off before, it might have been okay through a camera. But what do you do if they're now in person and you're trying to help them with speech or a language issue? What are your accommodations or accommodations?
They've been providing those services all along, even for the kids that are in person.
Right.
Like, for speech and language pathologists, we actually have the Plexiglas screens.
Gotcha.
We have the distancing pieces that are in place. And they've become very skilled in their ability to provide the services that kids need and to make those things happen. So for them, they've had to redo their schedules because they may have had a kid in the early half-day, but now it's a better fit as we meld groups back together that they can start to figure out how to make their schedule more efficient so they can give kids the time that they need. In some situations, kids were in remote learning plans for special education services. And now that they're coming back, we're able to provide, in some cases, more of the minutes that would have been given in normal circumstances because they're here with us for longer periods of the day.
Oh, good. No, that was just something that if you don't necessarily use those services, I would have no idea how they're working. So that's good to hear. Thank you.
I think that's such a good point. It's really taken the people intimately involved with the children, with the schedules, with the building. So it has been, and again, that's where the thank you comes in because it's really, everybody's had to think again, like, what needs to get modified? What needs to get changed with this effort to also minimize the change, too?
Just one question. First of all, I'd like to sort of thank everyone. This seems like a very solid plan. You guys obviously have worked very hard on it, so this is really, really great. Just one question about the ventilation. I see that you're really happy to see that you're doing this outdoor pre-kindergarten thing. That's great, there's outdoors. And the outdoor lunch, you know, is a fantastic idea. And then the PE outdoors, I think that's really great. What's being done in terms of windows? From everything I gather, the research is showing now that the good ventilation is more important than distancing. And having open windows, obviously, is one of the ways we can get the most air turnover in a room. So I'm wondering what you are doing in terms of either encouraging or requiring staff to keep windows open when the students are there?
I mean, I think that's a great, you know, message to all our principals, and they know that, especially as we're now into the warmer weather months. I mean, I know today's particularly warm and we'll have days colder than today. But, you know, encouraging people to open the windows, to get children outside as much as possible as through the examples you've heard. I also, not to put Jim on the spot, but we are exploring some ventilation enhancements, some air purifying systems. We're going to pilot some, I believe, starting next week. So you'll probably be hearing more from us. And again, it's an opportunity to take some of that economic stimulus money and apply it towards something that we think would be beneficial, you know, to the classrooms, particularly classrooms that don't have the operable windows or don't have, don't have as many of those. So expect to hear more from us on that very soon. But, you know, I think, Jeff, you make a great point. Also, just open the windows or the doorways into the hallway and that kind of thing, so.
Yeah, I think it's a great, great thing to do for our purifiers and what the HVAC is doing in terms of the air turnover there. That's really great. But just opening a window, you can get a massive increase in the air turnover just by doing something extremely simple. And with the new variants that are floating around now, that's become even more important because, as we know, those are more infectious. And so just having that good ventilation, I think, is really key. And opening windows is just, you know, the simplest thing we can do to get that.
One question I had. I think it was mentioned that there were six positions open, but I think it was also said that we hired five long-term subs?
So when the presentation was created, it looked like it was going to be six. But when we, today, actually, when we were looking at totaling numbers of where we're at and who's replied, it's been five. We had a person that was, we offered a position to who hasn't responded yet, so.
So I guess five is what we're going with, or if that person responds, then it'll be six?
It's five that we're going with right now. There are two people that we are going to try to interview next week sometime. So it could go up to seven, it could go six, it could stay at five.
And so we'll bring that to you. And again, I know it becomes a little bit of an after the fact. There will be a formal, you know, board action item to approve the personnel report that would have these long-term subs on there. But again, it's another area where we've had to kind of forge, forge forward with this idea of creating some co-teaching or, you know, high-quality paraprofessional support for our students has been what we really learned with creating some of those larger class sizes. So again, thank you for that flexibility because that's really what has allowed us to feel comfortable, again, particularly with some of those larger classes. I know we had talked a lot last time about teacher shortage. We truly, our HR specialist went through our entire applicant pool and reached out to everybody and said, "Are you still interested in possible employment from, you know, April 12th until the end of the school year?" So the pool got pretty small from there. But again, we were looking at, and I think this entire group interviewed them, right? So we're really confident in the quality also. So appreciate that, that there are people willing to jump in at this time in the year.
Just out of curiosity, is that reimbursable with any of like the SRS running? Or is that considered?
I think it is. I think it is.
I mean, it's an added cost because of this.
I mean, it's an added cost because of this.
Due to COVID, right, right. We had to staff our buildings differently.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Other than that, I don't have any questions. I just wanna, you, you kind of, Angela said exactly what I was thinking, just like, everybody top down. We have asked a lot of everybody that works in this district and everybody has really stepped up to the plate to make this happen. And with the weather being warmer, particularly these last couple of days, I've had a chance to actually interact with my neighbors on the weekends. Very, everybody I've talked to, the kids and the parents are very excited about getting back in next week and seeing friends that they haven't seen because they're in other classrooms, things like that. So just huge thank you for me to everybody here and everybody in the district that's either potentially watching or not. The tremendous amount of work that you guys went through and it is significantly appreciated by this community.
I'm gonna jump on that really quick, jump off of that real quick because I forgot to thank one other group. The office staff at all four schools have been phenomenal. They helped to get responses from the people who hadn't responded. And the amount of time they've probably spent on the phones trying to track down responses has just been, it's been great. So I need to make sure I thank the office staff at all four schools too.
Indeed, there are a lot of people all around. Probably pretty much every employee of the district, I'm guessing. Has done extra work above and beyond on this. It's, it's definitely a great plan and it's, it's a great option for kids. And definitely, I'm on behalf of myself, I'm very appreciative of all the work that's been put in and being able to provide this and put this plan together at such short notice.
Thank you.
Martha, I do have, this is totally a third second question. I noticed that the placement emails came out today and thank everybody. I know it's like a bazillion hours of work for you guys and I can't imagine how many pivots you've been through. But was everyone pretty much on board with the placement? Have you heard any surprise? I doubt anyone was surprised because they knew they were remote if they're gonna be going in person or not. Did it go okay today?
No one jinxed us. It's going well. It's going well.
But I did, yeah, I did see them come today. So I was hoping everything went smoothly and, because I would guess that people would know, you know, what they had chosen. So thank you for everything and hope it goes well on Monday.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you all. So Sheri, we, we talked one other thing under education committee and that's the school calendar. And Hauser later start time is part of our calendar.
Right.
Yeah, so if you're okay Sheri, we'll jump in.
Oh yeah, go ahead.
As you know, we had discussed our school calendar and the draft calendar that we have on our website because we know parents were eager to see that. Took the winter break and spring break schedule with, that matches the Riverside Brookfield High School schedule. But we had not determined our first day and last day of the school year. Essentially, those were the items that were missing, critical items. We were waiting on knowing a little bit more about construction in particular and then also just looking at what other schools close to us, particularly Comarc and Brookfield are doing. So with that, we now have a proposal about the first day and last day. And we, that would be a form of board action at the April 21st board meeting, but wanted to provide it to all of you tonight for any discussion and input. And then embedded in that is the Hauser later start time. So this is something, as you know, that we have talked about kind of off and on probably for two years. And I think as you all know, kind of an interesting thing happened because of the pandemic. We started school at 8:30 and just have kind of learned that kids are doing well with the 8:30 start time. Just tardies and even absences are much, much improved. And so we would like to just go ahead and propose that the 8:30 start time would be the Hauser start time for next school year. Again, through board policy and also with our teacher contract, it's a recommendation that I make to all of you and the board in approving the school day as something that could be approved along with the calendar, the later start time. So I may, I may have said everything we were gonna say.
You did, but that's okay. I guess I'll just say, are there any questions about any of it?
I think for the tangent was it looked like you just moved shit there everything about a week.
Question was, I think the target for the sprinklers, the 20th, and then I'm trying to find the, I think it was the 25th.
25th, yeah.
Right.
So you think, does Ramesh think that's gonna happen?
Yeah, we've talked to Ramesh multiple times. He calls the substantial completion the 15th of August. And then knowing that there would be some additional cleanup or that perhaps things, you know, we can.
So there's a buffer.
Yeah, and then we know teachers are really eager to get into their classrooms. Teachers really need time to get their classrooms set up. So again, unfortunately, Central will probably be on a tighter schedule than would be ideal. But we didn't want to make the first day too late. I mean, also then pushes like a June 8th is the last day of school. And this year, I know it's June 10th and I think people have already, are sensing that that feels later. Obviously, we started later this year for a number of reasons, construction, but also the pandemic. So we'd rather, it feels a bit more normalized to go to that, that slightly earlier start date than whatever.
Personally, I'm good with it. I like the early June, the 10th feels a little late this year. I was just wondering if we felt comfortable that the construction would be done in, in time to do that.
The date also aligns us with districts 94 and 95 as well.
Okay.
And I, just from a basic scan, it seems like for parents, the structure seems to be similar to what we're doing for the last few years with the, the way that the vacations are, are scheduled and the days, you know, the institute days and things like that. So unless you can identify anything different, I'd like to assure people it's very, what I would consider a normal schedule for the year. A typical, I won't say normal.
A typical, a typical schedule, we hope will be a more typical school year.
Traditional for our district, the way it's structured. So.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Angela.
And that should be everything. So we'll move on to Jeff, I mean, sorry, Joel and Wesley.
All right. Yes, personnel committee is next.
Nothing to report out for tonight.
All right. Policy committee.
Nothing to report out here.
Brings us to facilities.
Just that the bids for the sprinkler system were delayed by two days to allow the contractors additional time to develop their numbers. And this was because of the complexity of the work. But no change to the rest of the schedule.
All right. And then finally, the finance committee.
We have one item which is Mr. Finn is gonna tell us about the expected amount of money that the district is gonna receive over the next three years from the various federal stimulus bills that have passed in the last year. Mr. Finn, if you wanna.
Hello. I, we've got notice that there would be a third SRS amount when the last federal relief bill passed. And there's some estimates of what our portion of that would be. And the last number I saw was 1.3 million. And we'll have till 2024 to spend that money. It could be spent over three years. And it hasn't shown up on our ISB website yet. Like the other two are pretty well confirmed. 150 for CARES and the 593 for SRS 2. And then, but in the next few weeks, we should get a firm number on this, but every number I've seen is over a million dollars. So we'll make plans on how to use that best for recovering from the pandemic.
So is this money that goes directly like into our bank accounts or is this something we have to file for reimbursements for or how does it?
We'll file for reimbursement, but it's, it's held for us like, like the other grants. So. And then once we can turn in receipts and justify the expenditures, then they'll approve it and send us the money.
I, I think I've heard that the, the categories available for reimbursement are pretty broad. But I mean, is there any examples or ideas that you could share in terms of what, what we might be able to reimburse?
It could be used for personnel. If there's some, say interventionists or support for learning. It could be used to make changes to your facilities. One of the things we're looking at is these air purifiers. Anything that you might not have done had there been no pandemic is, is pretty broad. So that's my interpretation so far.
And I would say that, you know, for us, a strong focus on learning recovery. So what does that mean? Whether it's after-school programming, additional intervention, as Jim said, additional coaching positions for teachers as they have taken on a lot of new integration of technology and there's been some great things learned that I know people want to continue with. There's certainly interesting questions about what will the future look like? You know, what do we learn from the pandemic? What are those? You know, we've talked about those silver linings that may change how we do some teaching and learning as we move on into the future. But again, I think, you know, we, we are already thinking about what are those personnel things, personnel items that would enhance student learning, learning recovery, but also knowing that there's a kind of a three-year, a three-year time window on that too. So we want to be careful to sort of not over commit to some programs and services that, you know, perhaps would need to be longer term. Or know that we get it paid for, for three years and then would have to commit, you know, locally in the future beyond that. So lots to think about, lots for us to consider and we'll be gathering a lot of feedback just from, even from our own staff and from the parent community and figuring out the best way to, to spend the extra money.
If people are watching and understanding, looking at the attachments, the amount of money we're talking about is for the three bills is a little, little over $2 million, $2.1 million it looks like. I like what Martha said that, you know, that there should be a big focus on students, you know, the students' education. Despite the heroic efforts of our staff, obviously have been really disrupted over the last year because of this. And there's no question, there have been losses of learning relative to what there would have been. So I like what Martha said, you know, about spending this, some of this money on trying to, you know, get the students back up to where they should be. It makes a lot of sense to me. I guess I would have, you know, caution about spending a lot of money on air purifiers unless we are fairly certain that A, they're going to work, they're going to do something useful. And B, I think, you know, you always have to be careful about fighting the last battle. You know, going forward, hopefully this thing will be over. And you, you don't want to spend a ton of money on air purifiers that are just sitting there unused. So I guess this is something I think, you know, we should be, think very long and hard about and have some kind of, you know, some strong evidence that they're actually going to be useful. So I guess I would sort of weigh in on spending money on students is a great idea. Air purifiers, I think we, I would need to see some evidence that, you know, that's, that's money well spent. So.
I've seen some stuff, even just box fans, just to get the air out of the room too. I don't know how, yeah, I don't know how well that works.
Works very well, actually. Opening the windows is a huge benefit. Putting a fan to suck air out is, you know, even better. But opening the windows is just a massive decrease in air circulation just from that.
I'm just thinking about some of the, your question from last time about a lot of, like, all of the new rooms upstairs don't have operating windows. So if you could at least get the door open and blow the air out, just create something with air circulation. But, yeah.
Well, we'd have to see what the, the cost of those air purifiers are. And I think some that I've seen are pretty reasonable and justifiable as a one-time expense, even if we're talking about just eight weeks.
Yep.
But again, we will see.
Thanks for providing all the documentation on the, the SRS.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I feel like I've been trying to find a nice concise version of it and this is better than what I've found. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Especially when it comes to those federal documents.
Yeah, yeah. This was, this was so easy to read and decipher the difference between the three.
All right. Any, any further questions for Mr. Finn? Thank you. And I think that's it for financing.
Thanks, Jeff. All right. And the next item is a board action, the increase in, of in-person learning time. Is there a motion that the Board of Education approve the plan for increased in-person learning time as presented?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to thank part of the staff who came tonight. They're in the corner, I think, the principals. For at least giving some, answering some of the questions I had about staff and their needs and their planned time and how do we accommodate for co-teaching and those kinds of things. It's so important. So I appreciate the extra detail and cross our fingers for next week. So.
I think we've all gone through a round of thank yous to the staff. It definitely bears repeating. But yeah, I, you know, I'm very impressed with this plan and looking forward to participating in it as a family. All right. If there is no further discussion, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay. Mr. Beerhead?
Hi.
Mr. Miller?
Hi.
Mr. Barsadi?
Hi.
Mrs. Murphy?
Hi.
Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
Mrs. Kleiber?
Hi.
And Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Motion passes.
All right. At this time, is there any public comment?
There is not.
Okay. And next item on the agenda we have listed as an informational item, the saliva screening participation.
So we're just trying to, you know, present that to the board every, at every meeting opportunity. It hasn't changed a lot. We continue to encourage people to participate, particularly with those new variants out, particularly as we're gonna have more children in the buildings. I know, I think our staff numbers have dropped off because of the vaccinations. Again, they're not telling us if we're vaccinated that we shouldn't participate. But I think it becomes perhaps less meaningful to the, to the staff. I, I did look at that consenting number versus participating numbers and it continues to, you know, there's a disparity there.
Yeah. And I guess I'm, I'm watching, I've been watching these numbers and it just seems to be falling, I mean steadily, not by a lot, but falling for those participating. And I'm beginning to wonder, is it even beneficial? Because my, my guess is people who participate are already conscientious and are, are taking part. And if we're only having less than half the people participating, I mean, really how valuable is this? Granted, we hope that we can catch something, I mean, but once we fall, start falling below 50%, both for staff and students, I, I really sort of start worrying the value of this.
I think that's a good question to ask, but I do think that the benefit is linear, actually, in the number of students. If you have one student taking it, it would, it is only, the cost, the cost is linear and the benefit's linear. So essentially, the ratio of the two is, doesn't matter percentage.
No, I understand that. But I guess, what I guess what I'm trying to say is the people, my, it's based on previous studies, not obviously this one, but previous studies, people who participate in this type of stuff are more conscientious.
That assumption is a little bit flawed in this situation because if you have had COVID, you will not participate in this in the last three months. So this also has to reflect that there are, that we do have, you know, students and staff who have had COVID and they are asked to not participate for three months simply, even if they consented at this one point because they will possibly show up, you know, with a positive, you know.
No, and that's, that's a good point. I guess if we could see that reflected in these numbers because that.
I don't think you can, like.
I don't think you can.
I think there's a lot of families who keep that personal. They're not, I mean, if I, if, if a family member had COVID two months ago and, you know, I'm not sure that's information schools are, are, I'm not sure I would give that information if it wasn't necessary. I'm not participating for a reason and that's my reason. So if I'm not, you know.
I personally think it's, it's definitely valuable. You can be conscientious of anything and you could still contract COVID. It's really nefarious thing, especially with the new variants. And I think with the increase in, we have mild increases in percentages in our state. And with the variants coming in, I think it's a reasonable thing to continue. So.
I totally understand what you're saying though. I mean, I would love to see these numbers higher and I urge people that can participate to participate. But just to be clear too, we, the way this is fine, like the money is spent per test, correct? So it's not like per consenting.
Per test, right.
So it's not like, so these, not at least, but while the numbers are down, it's less money to run. So at least it's not like a flat fee and we just don't have a lot of people participating. So that feels okay. But I mean, agreed, I would love to see these at much higher numbers.
I agree with that, yeah.
And I'll send out another parent communication and, you know, again, I continue to say it. I, I think the principals continue to say it, the principals continue to send just even the reminders so that even people who have consented and the vials been sent home to make sure that they're participating. But I do think, you know, with the shift in reduced social distancing at, at the same time when we're, there's a lot of conversation about variants that I think if people would participate, it would be, it would be, you know, just more value. And absolutely, you're right that we're only paying for the vials that we submit. So again, we're not, it's not any waste of money to have fewer people. We'd certainly like it to be more people.
And I think you've mentioned this in, in previous. And I think you've mentioned this in, in previous communications, but I think it's worth emphasizing if you're going to send another one, which is that, you know, after a year of foot dragging, the FDA is finally on board with mass routine screening tests. And so, you know, it's something that is, we now have like, you know, before they were sort of, I mean, high. But now it's, you know, pretty much all the public health authorities say this is a desirable thing to do. And so the fact that we have a system in place, I think, you know, it's up and running, you know, it seems very clear we should just continue with that and try to encourage more participation, as you, I would discuss here.
And with larger classrooms, I'm kind of curious to see if the participation does go up. Because maybe people were comfortable with the spacing and everything before and now that we're squeezing people closer together, maybe more families will decide to participate. So I would also love to see the COVID numbers in relation, but we're never going to get that data. So it would, it would just be helpful in understanding. But I don't, I don't think that's anything that we would probably be able to put together.
All right. Anything else on this item? All right. And if not, future meeting dates are April 21st, 2021, regular business meeting, 7:00 PM in the multipurpose room of Ames. Board will enter into closed session at 6:30 PM if necessary and return to open session at 7:00 PM. Next is May 4th, 2021 is the biennial organizational meeting at 7:00 PM in the Ames multipurpose room. It feels so strange. It's always, always had that at Howser.
Oh, really?
It seems like it to me. It seems like we're always at Howser. In my mind, when I was picturing it, it's at Howser.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It'll be different this year, but this is a year of differences. Please note this date, please note the date change. The meeting will be held on a Tuesday. This is, I'll start again on that. So this is May 4th, 2021, biennial organizational meeting, 7:00 PM in the Ames multipurpose room. This meeting will be held on a Tuesday. May 19th, 2021, regular business meeting, 7:00 PM in the multipurpose room of Ames. Board will enter into closed session at 6:30 PM if necessary and return to open session at 7:00 PM. And if there is nothing else, it's not even eight yet. This meeting is adjourned.